Call the meeting to order at four thirty-one. We have the regular meeting minutes, September seventeenth. You're all here.
I'm making motions.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
All right.
Uh, special town meeting. And we have a few vacancies to fill. Obviously, we have the two Board of Ed ones. The Dan Lake Authority for one member. The ever-present Morris Sew Authority for two, well, actually four, two regular and two alternates. I'm gonna try reaching out to some people that are on the sewer line if they'd be interested in jumping on that. I don't know, it's, it's always been such a tough one to fill.
Yeah, very tough.
And there's not a lot of work to it, I mean. It'd be nice if you, I don't know how many meetings a year they do, but it'd be nice if there's only like four meetings a year they'd have to worry about and, you know. But, so that would be October sixteenth. And we're trying to get it done before the Board of Ed meeting, which is on the seventeenth.
Okay, good.
And hopefully, the candidates can get sworn in that night and be ready for the following night.
Can they?
Yeah, if Lori's here, yeah.
Okay.
Which I think she will be. So we have a couple of people interested in the Board of Ed seats, so see who else shows up at the meeting and hopefully they'll be able to move forward, because obviously very important.
All right, I'll make a motion to have the town meeting on October sixteenth at six o'clock.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Did we check what planning is going?
Yeah, we're doing it six o'clock.
All that without planning.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There a copy want sign?
Yes, this is the original.
Day in there.
Today's day?
Yes, the first. Thank you.
Thank you. Tax collectors' report looks pretty good at fifty-five point nine one percent of budget collected uh, for this time of year. Interest is still doing okay. And that's about it, any questions on that? I'll try and answer them. Region twenty, school district update. Uh, well, one good point is we finally got our FOBs for our recreation department, so we can get back into the gym uh, on a regular basis. Also got one for the uh, emergency management, uh, which is obviously very necessary. Thankfully, we're not in a position like North Carolina is right now.
Oh my god.
You know, it could be, we could have gotten hit hard ourselves, so it's nice we're gonna have access. I did mention to uh, our facilities manager Craig Rebillard about doing a walkthrough over there and, you know, get Dave Hart and Rob Edner and kind of do a walkthrough of the building, so if we do need it in a time of emergency, that uh, we'll have a good plan. And what we'll have access to and what, you know, shouldn't have access to and all that.
Okay.
So, we're gonna get moving on that now that the generator's there uh, and it's up and running. There was a, gosh, was it at least six months delay of getting that thing up and going? And I reached out to the company, I said, hey, you know, you guys really dropped the ball on this. And uh, so they, instead of the one-year warranty, we got the five-year warranty for parts and labor for that generator, so. We got something out of that delay from them. Uh, it was, it was pretty annoying that it took so long. As, as far as region six, I'm sure you've been reading the news, uh, they are now asking one point nine million uh, for the Litchfield School debt, which I believe would cover some of the costs involved with that. You know, because originally it was one point eight something. Now they're also asking a total one million in the uh, for capital funding for referendum. And I think they are looking at October twenty-second for the hearing on that or the, the public comment on that.
Public comment.
In December third would be the referendum itself. I think they're looking at from noon to, noon to eight, uh, December third.
What'd you say the public comment was, that was what date?
October twenty-second, I think at six o'clock at Litchfield Intermediate School.
Yeah.
And they're saying up to a million. So that's where there's a little bit of clarification, I think, that's still out there of usually you say, oh, we're gonna borrow up to, and most would say you end up borrowing that much. Where we want to say you don't wanna come anywhere close to that.
Well, they still have at least another one meeting before their uh, hearing or their public comment period. I have an issue with it, and I brought it up to them at administration, the Board of Ed Executive Committee, uh, a number of times is there was a million dollars in the budget that we approved for region twenty, for capital. And according to the charter for region twenty, that money can only be used for facility improvements. So, they approved a capital project list back in May, I think it was May sixth. And on that list were over six hundred thousand dollars of the items on that list were not for cap, or for facility improvements. They were for, you know, mascot costumes, band uniforms, athletic uniforms, golf cart wraps, you know, whole, whole deal. That's in violation of their charter. What was really odd was at their last meeting, they presented a capital list for this million-dollar ask that they had for referendum. And it was pretty much all the same items from the first list for the first million dollars that we approved. So, if they didn't spend that first million dollars on that capital list that they approved back in May, what did they spend it on? Because it's only for facility improvements per our charter. Where'd the money go? My understanding of possibly it was for uh, they'll pay their, you know, ongoing costs for other items, operational costs. And then again, it's a violation of the charter, I believe.
Well, they're saying the items on the list are already committed, so they're already bought.
They're already bought?
Yeah.
They already spent the money?
Well, they have eight hundred and fifty thousand of that first million dollars encumbered. Does, I'm not sure, does that mean they are locked in? I'm not sure, you know. But, you know, what they're really not talking too much about is also the four hundred and fifty-four thousand of outstanding invoices for region six. How, I know we have to wait and see, you know, how, what the auditor says, where, where those bills get divvied up to, whether it's region twenty, Litchfield, or uh, region six. And then, of course, Litchfield has, I think, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars over budget for the Litchfield Schools. And again, there's a whole pile of different bills that have to get divvied up to see where they belong to. So we're looking at, you know, like one point three million dollars there that we have to pay for, one way or another. They're asking another million for capital that they should have already spent out of the budget. Instead they use that money for something else. Plus, we're also, the three towns, I would imagine, Warren, Morris, and Goshen, have to look at our uh, region six pension liabilities. You know, with this, with this pension being underfunded, you know, at thirty-three percent. So I think they're asking kind of a lot.
Did they answer that, what happens with the region six pensions, if it dissolved?
Well, they're getting an opinion on who's responsible for it.
So it's just on hold?
Yeah, they're, at the last uh, region six uh, Board of Ed meeting, it was their, I think it was their finance committee meeting. Their uh, region twenty said their attorneys were looking into the, the matter and have to figure it out. So, there's a lot of money that's owed out there and they're asking for a lot more money, and I take issue with that. I, I saw very little on cuts. Uh, they cut a position at uh, Principal of Boag. Personally, you know, I guess without Arithusa, they felt they didn't need that position anymore. But there's also a lot of other places they can look at administratively for cuts.
Well, I thought they were coming back with all kinds of cuts and try to.
They, they mentioned they were gonna work hard between now and December to do it, but we're hoping that they're not, they have been working hard, we're just not being shown where those are.
Well, hopefully at that meeting, that they'll come up with a plan, because the way it's shaped right now, I don't feel that the taxpayers are gonna approve that money.
I don't believe so, from what I've heard.
Right now.
I think people are really looking for some, you know.
Clarity.
Well, clarity and also like a real hard look at, you know, reducing the burden on the taxpayers and if you keep looking at everything that's adding up here, we're talking like over four million dollars in, in debt.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of money.
Well, we also need more lawyers for figuring out the pensions and everything else that we weren't expecting to come to the table either, so.
Yeah, and I don't know where they're, how they're existing, you know, current budgets looking for overages, because you're talking uh, boy, they gotta be close to, close to two hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. Uh, now that they've just paid five grand for the guy from Ed Advance to do that uh, analysis. They're paying uh, David Irwin, uh, the consultant there. And he's been there a while now, so. I, I'd love to see where their line items are at right now on their current budget, because, you know, that's another thing we have to worry about. So. I, for me, unless they do some really serious hard look and some reductions uh, between now and December third, I, I'm not supporting the uh.
I don't think we can support that, Tom. We're putting the burden on the taxpayers, giving them an open checkbook, basically. And uh, for what the taxpayers voted on originally, when they presented that, this is not what the taxpayer voted on.
Yeah.
And uh, they shouldn't put the burden on the taxpayers. They should make some cuts to show some incentive that they're trying to improve their budget.
Yeah. And my issue, again, I reinforce it, is they violated charter, I believe. So I've been told like three different stories on what they did with the original capital money that was supposed to be in a special account for facility improvement only, and the story keeps changing, so that tells me one thing. Hopefully uh, they can do some, a good hard look, come back with something.
Yeah.
But I do hope things are running smoothly at those schools right now and uh, everything's getting worked out for the kids.
I tell you, if anyone had a chance to go to the games this weekend, under the lights, I, I mean, just the energy and the school spirit of the kids, it was great.
That's good.
It was great.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was nice they were able to use, at least for one night, the uh, Plum Hill playing fields. Hopefully that continues.
Field hockey wouldn't have used it anyway, they, the Womago field's better.
Is it?
Yeah. So, they were, they're, and that's why we play all our home games there anyway, we've actually requested to be at Womago.
Yeah, that is a nice field right there.
Lakeview.
Lakeview, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, anything more on, I, I kind of did my soapbox on our region twenty. Town center project, we did have a meeting here with DOT last Wednesday. Had some of the property owners were here. That would be affected directly by this. The DOT presented two plans, uh, one is a slight realignment of the existing intersection within keeping it the four-way with a blinking light. They really didn't think the timed signal light would work there at all. It would end up causing more backup than you would have right now. But the other plan is a roundabout. And it's interesting, the more you look at it, and you know, some of the ones they presented, they have in other towns in the state. They feel it's safer, keeps traffic moving. Uh, it's safer for pedestrians. I think big question that came into that was the effect on the adjoining property owners. So they're taking what they had and kind of, they're thinking they might try to scale it down a little bit as far as the diameter of it, of the roundabout. And shift it uh, more towards the park than towards the uh, northwest over there. So they're gonna send that, once they get that done, I think they're gonna send that out to us, take a look at it.
So I looked at, I wasn't in favor of the roundabout, I really wasn't.
Yeah.
After I looked at their presentation, and I looked at the one in Granby. It's kind of a nice concept. I like the roundabout, I like the way it looks, I think it'll prove the center of town here. I didn't realize how much traffic is in that center of town on Friday at five o'clock. I came by Friday at five o'clock, and there were probably four cars backed up on all four sides. And I think the roundabout would definitely improve that center of town. And I don't think it has a big impact on, on the properties that are here, if you look at the properties, I'm sure that the state has dealt with water lines, sewers, whatever was brought up at the meeting. So I, I, I hope that they make a good presentation on this roundabout.
Yeah, it was interesting, because they can, they said, they mentioned landscaping.
Yes.
And, you know, some signage like welcome to Morris or something like that in the center to kind of make it look pleasing, you know?
It looks very nice, it really does.
I just don't want anything else blocking a view.
Right.
Uh, you know, it's just the upkeep and, and everything that goes along with it, just make it safe, make it.
It looks very nice, which is good. And I think they've done this before, I mean, and there were questions about, you know, and going into the post office and going into the Poppies and they've dealt with this plenty of times.
Sounds like they're willing to work on that as well, because they were talking about coming from the west, coming into town about lowering the grade of the existing highway to have a better sightline as they come in. And they said they could probably work a little bit more on that, maybe not cut it down as deep to help with Poppies driveway and the post office and all that. And, you know, Steve Cook owns the uh, Free Family House and the post office and all that, he was there, Richard Skilton, who owns obviously Poppies and his house. Plus, he also owns the little lot right here across the road. And uh, Dave Fisher owns the Packers store, they were all there, listened to it and I think uh, you know, they may, I can't put words in their mouth, but they may come around to, to the roundabout.
That's the only, that's the only challenge in my mind is that turn into Poppies or, because you go around roundabouts to keep things moving.
Right.
So if you do have that, that's, you don't usually have a, right, you don't usually have a roundabout and need an immediate left.
Right.
Because it's not effective, affected any, anywhere else except for the Poppies.
Poppies and post office.
And the post office.
Right, that's what I mean.
But the left would really be the one that would slow traffic, yeah.
Right.
So we'll see what they come up with and we'll get it out to the people, put it on, you know, town website, Facebook and hopefully they'll send us like another print we can have on display here.
Now, were they waiting for us to, to give them which direction we wanted to go in, or were they gonna go with the roundabout?
Well, they're gonna modify the plan they had.
Okay.
And then look, and so we could see both.
Okay.
You know, the modified roundabout and the realignment one.
Okay.
But, yeah, they were, it was a good presentation.
Yeah, they did a very nice job. They answered a lot of questions, or uh, obviously the property owners had some concerns and they addressed all the issues and uh, you know, the, the biggest concern I think was being in construction in the summertime, how would affect the businesses? And these guys did this all the time, they would make it one what, one, you know, one lane for traffic, so business weren't really gonna get affected by it. So they, they did a really nice presentation.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my next question is.
And that was everybody's concern, you know, the, the Poppies and the Packers.
Major intersection, right. That's funny, I noticed the traffic this past week too, I was very surprised, it seemed heavier than normal.
Yeah, I, I don't know why, but I, I, I didn't realize there was that much traffic, I mean.
All right, uh, another kind of update report, heard from the state years ago, I can't remember what year it was. We did get a grant uh, from DOT for a lane white road uh, for just past Granby and where the, the hump was there. And we, I think it ended up being uh, the project was gonna be more than the grant uh, would allow for. So, the grant kind of went away and we end up doing this ourselves, you know, the workover there. But, there may be a possibility that we can uh, apply our costs to this grant and get some reimbursement out of it. So, that's what we're working, hoping with DOT to get that, see if it's possible. Because I think we did kind of a good job, really good job on our own and kept the cost down and achieved pretty much the same, you know, fact that you were, we were looking for. But, you know, you know, small towns can do things a lot more efficiently than large state.
Yeah.
Projects. So that's, that's a positive, hopefully we'll see some reimbursement from them, uh, we are kind of starting on, working on the bathrooms down here. Just trying to pretty much, they're gonna stay the same layout and everything, just really make them look a lot nicer and warmer.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, try to, you know, I think right now, we just had an audit uh, for ADA and the bathrooms are really actually, for handicap accessible, they were pretty much spot on, just added our grab bar or something here and there. So same layout, uh, improved aesthetically and uh, we're removing some pipes, putting in some drop ceilings, uh, drop ceilings, fans in each bathroom, make sure the heat works, uh, moving forward, you know, with a locked thermostat somewhere in there. And uh, should be much better, and we did have money in capital for that. Uh, I'm gonna see how the costs are coming in, but I think maybe next meeting we'll put ARPA on the agenda and talk about some of the unspent funds there and projects and uh, see what we can free up for perhaps other projects as well.
That's nice, I think with nicer restrooms will draw people for events and
They are pretty shabby.
Yeah, I mean, it ma, it matters a lot.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's kind of like, we've done a lot everywhere else and that's really the, one of the last spots we have to focus on, so. And uh, Mudson House Water System, I think they were there today.
Oh, okay.
There's some improvements on the filters there.
All right.
So, hopefully, the more that water gets used, the better.
Well, well, we can start using it then, yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure if it's done with the improvement.
Yeah.
And Eldridge, uh, or the portable housing, I believe they're supposed to be hydro fracking those two wells uh, fairly soon. And the Grilla expected good results, he goes generally, you know, they get pretty good results with that procedure, so. See where that goes. That's about all I have. Guys, have anything? Uh, no appointments, right? Oh, public comment, John and John?
Uh, yeah, I guess so, well, I know you've kind of addressed some of this with the region twenty, yes, my question was what we originally voted on in that original school budget that we voted on? And that was, now that it was supposed to be like a balanced budget at the time or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Are any of the current asks for region twenty included in that original budget? Or this is all new stuff that lists that, that they're now coming out with?
The original region twenty budget, it had one million uh, for capital. They didn't have a capital list, they didn't create that until after we approved the budget. So I think it was on May sixth, they came up with that capital list of projects and items they wanted to purchase, so.
That were supposed to be a part of the approved budget.
The original million, they came up with a list of, I think, one million forty-six thousand dollars.
We don't know where that originally knew, because I knew you guys talked about it, that smoothly. So we don't know where that original million was spent, because now they're asking for more money, which theoretically should have been covered by the original million.
Yeah.
So where does the, where do we, as, you know, you mentioned the taxpayers and stuff, uh, as a town, how will we be able to push back on their requests for money? Isn't it, it's not like an automatic, like where region twenty says, well, we need, you know, two million dollars from Morris? And are we legal, they say we, you know, in the town? Can we say no? I mean, or, or are we just bound by some connection to school districts that they just get their money?
And we can say no, uh, you know, one, at the uh, hearing that they're gonna have, you know, make the voice, voices loud and clear that, you know, we don't, if people don't support it, you know, come out and say, we don't support this, not gonna vote for it, if they do support it, same thing. But what comes to the referendum is, it's gonna be two questions. Uh, one for the one point nine million for Litchfield School System debt, which, again, we've already approved that when we approved the uh, charter.
Right.
But the other question will be the one million for additional capital. So that's the time people can really make their voices.
That's where we can vote, I voted out, yeah.
But question.
At the referendum.
Is the referendum held differently in regards to it has to pass in every town? Does it, is it just, what is that?
My understanding is, it's one, one vote. Everyone has a voice and doesn't have to pass in Litchfield. You know, or Litchfield just overvotes everyone else, although they have a greater voting population.
Yeah.
But it's just basic numbers.
So that's different than the merger was, merger was, it had to pass in every town. This does not have to pass in Morris, but it could pass in Litchfield or Warren and Goshen, and it's gonna pass, right?
Right.
That's different.
Yeah. So the accountant, although it wasn't a forensic accountant, the guy, he just submitted his findings.
Right.
And it wasn't very positive on, I think, what, what he was saying and where the money mysteriously seems to have gone. And I, you know, I said this at the last meeting, and I think the, the, you know, Attorney General's Office needs to get involved in it. Somebody did something with the money. Now, whether it was intentionally or not intentional.
Right.
But, you know, there needs to be some solid investigation here, whether it's like, I, I call it a forensic accounting, I don't know if that's the right term or not, I think it is. And I, I think that should have been done before these mergers were even, because they keep saying, oh, the budget was balanced, everything was fine. Well, if it's not now, then where did the books change?
Right.
And who changed them? And where did the money go?
We're gonna, we're gonna a little bit more, not all that, uh, hopefully when Dave Capletti, the uh, accountant, auditor finishes what he's doing, uh, because he's gonna look into exactly supposedly every invoice and was it put to the right bank, uh, right account, into the right school? You know, was some of that stuff that was charged to Litchfield, did that belong at region six or did it belong to the region twenty? You know, was some of that stuff that was charged to Litchfield, did that belong uh region six or did it belong to the region twenty? So when he gets done with that, hopefully in November, I think it is, we should know more. Uh, it would be nice to have kind of that answer uh before we vote as well.
Well, I would almost demand that that all has to be done before even any referendum they put on the table. For anyone to look at, because you're gonna be voting on incomplete knowledge.
I think that's what's hard is at the previous meeting or the one prior to that, they were saying. That the audit may not even come back for two, three months, but then they're talking about when they have to have this vote by. In order to make decisions and possibly have access to funds and everything else, so.
They back themselves into a corner, there's no doubt, I mean, you know, invoices have to be paid and, and I understand all that. You got people online who are listing people's jobs that need to be cut, we got help if you're one of those people that people scream that they need to cut your job. You know, it's just, it, it's a cluster, you know, there's, there's no doubt about it. But again, if, if you're asking the town, towns, you know, oh, you know, give us another million dollars. But we can't tell you what happened to the original, whatever, but trust us, obviously, we can all vote no, right?
Right.
But it would be nice to have the, the accounting and, you know, PowerPoint or whatever. You know, explaining everything where, where maybe people would turn around and say, okay, good, let's vote yes. You know, and to have a referendum on something like that without the information, I think, is just, you know.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have the big picture of all the liabilities that we have. And not just what we're voting on, you know, the one million, the one point nine million, people need to know about these outstanding. Liabilities between region six and the Litchfield School System, and uh that should be, you should have that knowledge before they go on and vote.
Cause we don't even know if those numbers are in this at all.
They're not.
So there's a whole nother.
Yeah.
Conversation.
I, I don't believe you could have a referendum without having information out to the, to the taxpayers.
Totally agree, they need clarity.
I don't know what a referendum costs these town, but there's another added expense on top.
Mm-hmm, especially to know that we are pretty much going into having to do it multiple times.
Right.
With the, with the temperature that's out there right now.
So can the town of Morris push back the region twenty board of ed and say. We're not willing to back a referendum until all the accounting uh information is shared with the public. Cause region twenty seems to be cramming this December third, whatever date is, I may understand why because of bills and stuff, but. Can the town, can you, as a town, push back and say, it's nice they keep saying December third, but, you know. We can't tell our, our taxpayers to go vote for this or back it, because we don't have a full picture.
I'll check on that, I, I think we're kinda locked into having to have the referendum, uh. But I will check legal on that, just to clarify.
I mean, I, I think we need it, I mean, there will be eventually a referendum, I'm just wondering if it has to be on that particular day.
Right.
Before X, Y, and Z is in place.
I think they're, they're looking at the, you know, the outstanding bills they have to pay and, you know, start running low on.
Yeah.
Cash on hand.
Yeah.
To pay their wages and everything, so, yeah.
You're saying if region twenty is filing for this referendum, Morris cannot say, we're not gonna have it, it's dictated.
I'll check to make sure, cause that's been asked before, my understanding that, yes, we do have to have it, but I'll double check to make sure it's the case.
Right, cause if it, if the word out in say Morris is that, or to your point that we're not backing it, it's gonna fail. And we're gonna spend X amount of, I think, I don't know what.
I don't.
Cost to have a referendum, take course twenty thousand dollars, well, it's gonna be twenty grand.
But I, I would think the questions that we're asking, I would think the other town they're asking the same questions.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I would say that they're in the same position that if we don't have answers, why are we having a referendum? I just thought it. You know, Goshen and Warren have to be asking the same questions.
And that gets asked to who then, superintendent or acting superintendent of region twenty, who makes that decision?
And it, well, everyone needs to come out on the twenty second of October and ask all those questions, or directly to the superintendent beforehand.
And then unrelated, I think, I think a roundabout's a great idea.
It's very impressive.
I, I, I looked at roundabouts in, in different town, I mean, different places that are getting really popular finally in the United States and. I think it'd be great, like you said, the middle of Morris.
Put a statue of John up in there.
Put it in the middle, like the old, like the sign of this stop and go, you know, flag it, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
You guys are doing a good job, I, I appreciate what I'm hearing, you know, I think you guys have the town's back and I think that's really important. So thank you.
Well, thank you, thanks for being here too. Is there a motion to adjourn at five oh six?
I'll make the motion.
I was like an.
All those in favor?